Six open, please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning. We apologize that, uh, see Jake's not here and everything's falling apart on our computer system. So, anyway, we'll start off with public comments, comments, if anyone has any public comments. We ask you to come up to the podium and give you three minutes, state your name and address for the record so that we can make sure that we can get you recorded. Okay, C and nine, we'll move on to the regular business. Approval of previous minutes of board meeting number two, Thursday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, approval of bills for payment, motion.
Motion to move.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes, legal notices.
Motion to approve legal notices, numbers one and two.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Okay, Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Motion.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Yes. All right, travels, commissioners O M B.
Commissioners, this is for the Commissioners Office to attend state and Ohio CCA Association, Ohio Geophracy Association, Karma Township Association dinners, meetings, seminars, and conferences within the state of Ohio and PA for the year twenty twenty-three estimated at seventy-five hundred.
Garland, please.
Good morning, Commissioners Autry, Hans, Joe. Uh, the court's twenty twenty-three travel request is on the agenda to attend seminars, conferences, and meetings sponsored by the Supreme Court and other legal des- organizations within the state of Ohio and possible other destinations. Estimated fifteen thousand dollars and it's non-general fund.
All right, sanitary engineer.
I'm gonna do it because they can't get on.
Oh, they can't get on you?
No. Good morning. This is agreement to ten various C S E A, O F C I G, N A, R P A, C T A, U S B A, Ohio Developmental Services, A R C L C D B T B, similar to several within the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio. Twenty twenty-three estimated at three thousand, non-general.
You guys just stand up there because you're gonna log in, you know. You're gonna take over all the statues. Okay, Treasurers Office, Ken.
Okay, good morning, everyone. This is my annual request for travel reimbursement primarily to allow for continuing education of the treasurer and also this year I've been, I've been named an officer with the County Treasurers Association of Ohio, so I'll be attending more frequent meetings in Columbus.
Congratulations.
I think it's good for our county.
It is. Always good to have a state represent something.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Okay, motion approved travels.
Motion approved travels, A through D.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes. Agreements, auditors.
Um, here on behalf of the Auditor's Office, I'm Tina Murditch, and this agreement is with Barbara Zorn for project management services for the domestic relations for the amount forty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Tina. Clear course.
Good morning, everyone. Letter B is an agreement with Barb Zorn for project management services for the ongoing implementations on the D filing system and also other technological projects for the twenty twenty-three amount of not exceed five thousand dollars in non-general funds. Letter C is an agreement with Huntington Bank for banking services for all six of our locations. Um, this is a two-year agreement and there is one note I want to make, there are general funds involved with this agreement.
Thanks, Ken. Convention Miss, Tara.
Good morning, Commissioners Nancy Autry-Jeff. Uh, this is an agreement with First Communication for half-page ads in the Midwest travel sections of the April, May, and October, November issues of Country Living Magazine. Uh, the total is six thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and thirty cents and that is non-general fund.
Thank you. Commissioners Purchasing, Jeff.
Good morning, everyone. This is to enter into sublease agreements with the District Board of Health for office space. It's for building inspection and the planning commission. It's under the same terms and conditions as the previous agreement. This runs for approximately one year and the cost of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars for each department.
Okay, engineers.
Good morning, Andrew. That does an agreement with the following for Italian recovery services for estimated amounts of stolen recovery for three thousand, Jesualts for truck services, four thousand. G is an agreement with commercial truck and trailer company pairs through our food vehicle of fifty-nine in the estimation of thirty-four eighty-four, fifty-five million or generally.
Next, J J C. Okay, there was probably a few online, that's just.
It's, it's an agreement for updated monitoring services, an estimated amount of twenty thousand dollars and it's non-general.
Yeah, sure.
I is with Clemens Nelson Associates. It's a Kentucky point factoring study, an amount of nine thousand two hundred sixty dollars. Again, this is non-general. And moving to J, this is a lease agreement with Mahoning County Commissioners for office space will kill for the amount of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents and again, non-general funds.
Next, O M B.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with MS Consulting for administration services of the C B G fiscal twenty twenty-two grant, um, in the amount of sixty-five thousand and it's non-general.
Thank you. And Rick, you're up.
That was an agreement with utility contract in November to repairs for store break at six ninety-five thirty-eight thousand one hundred. Just around sixty thousand and seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. MS is a payment for the following providing sheet for application work on repairs for various murders and puns and general emergency repairs at various locations for two years. These are estimated amounts. Ten York's electric shop, twenty-five thousand per year, signature technology, seven five hundred per year, home systems, LLC, settled at that time, three years. And is an agreement with the following mechanical plumbing and pipe and water at various locations for two years, estimated amounts. O is a mechanical fifteen thousand per year, Alcon mechanical ten thousand per year. O is an agreement with the following for electrical services, purchase year repairs on the avenue basis for two years, for an estimated amounts. J B Electric, fifteen thousand per year, University Electric, ten thousand per year. W E T U, the Orange Tri-Area Electric, ten thousand per year. E is an agreement with Columbia Health Care Center for two years, estimated about three thousand per year, the following twenty-two.
Ready. Treasurers Office.
Okay, uh, items Q and R, these are both agreements for longstanding relationships I've had in my office. Automated business equipment is our check scanning equipment as for licensing and maintenance and meter, public funds is our investment advisory manager. Thank you.
Okay, motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, letters A through R.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Okay, appointments. Commissioners' appointments to serve on various boards and board committees throughout the county. Uh, these are all ones that Carol, Anthony, myself, the commissioners alternate on different boards and, you know, one is the, the number and one is the alternate on the national. So, A is the commissioners' appointments onto the boards as per the agenda. Uh, B commissioners pursuant to R C fifty-one forty-nine, that's thirty-four point following individuals to serve on Mahoning County Corrections Planning Board effective January one, twenty twenty-three for the term of two years and that's as per the agenda as well on A and B. So, to add a motion to approve appointments.
Motion to approve appointments, letters A and D.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Okay, resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Okay, resolution of award, Senator.
A is an award for liquid copic soda, twenty-five percent liquid copic soda, fifty percent. Peripharite drinking water, free of wastewater treatment, for six years, as far as these are non-general, good. J C I Jones, Pumple, we have the copic soda, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty thousand per year, thirty-three years. P B S Technologies, A and B, Peripharite, one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred per year. Excel Chemical Company, Amo Copic Soda, twenty thousand fifty, eighty-six cents per year.
So, Rick, when everybody asks where your money's spent for the same thing, engineer, a lot of things.
If you want.
Okay, motion approved resolution awards.
Motion approved resolution awards to A.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Okay, resolutions, clear course.
It's a request for payment by moral obligation in the amount of one thousand two sixty-two eighty-four to Huntington Bank for banking services provided in November and December. And this is while we were negotiating the banking services agreement. Started in March and it took that length of time to get approved. So, this is just payment for those services during that time.
C L C O M B.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to amend resolution twenty-one eleven zero zero five to change the fiscal twenty-one planning grant local match from the city of Youngstown to Mahoning County General Fund Admin Fund in the amount twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Item C is a resolution to designate the official representative Carol Remilio Vagani and alternate dates in district for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Item D is a resolution for Ohio Vice Code five oh four fifteen on consent to the appointment of Mahoning County Prosecutor Gina Genova as a law director for Foreman Counselor. Item E is a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to accept U S Department of Treasury Local Assistance and Charter and Consistency Fund.
Ready. Okay, enough, dog board, resolution approving the unpaid leave of absence for one employee beginning January eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Jobs for family, children.
Resolution approving the unpaid seven-day suspension for two employees.
O M B, Lance.
This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a fourth amendment to the amendment of sublease with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction in the amount of eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixty.
Right, Senator.
I is resolution for the world to give payments, four thousand seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and two cents on air gas incorporated for emergency delivery or bulk transportation, we're obviously going to be able to provide treatment.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved resolutions, letters A through I.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner John DeCanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Vagani? Yes. Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Rick, I think that Janetti sabotaged the computers, so you had to do all those works. So. All right, well, we had asked our local representatives from the state who represent Mahoning County in some way, shape, or form, all part of, uh, of the county to come in at their leisure, if they're available, and let us know what is going on with bills that they're working on, uh, bills that they're voting on, bills that they're initiating, we're looking to initiate. The commissioners asked them all, we invited Senator Ruli, Representative Catrona, Representative Lauren McAlli, uh, to come in and talk to us a little bit about things and what's going on. Uh, and we'd like to make an updated regularly on what they're working on and how it improves the quality of life for the residents of Mahoning County. So, that's kind of where we're looking at, what we're looking to do in. Uh, we're also have been sending out correspondences to, uh, request them to work on specific items that help and will help in bring funding back to the, to the residents of Mahoning County and to the county's local governments. So, um, Lauren has re- responded to us and said that she would like to stop in today and just give us a little update, uh, as we hope that, that, you know, Senator Ruli and Representative Catrona will, when they're available, uh, as well. And Lauren, and I see you've got your best assistant with you possibly.
She could have eaten a popsicle, so perfect at it. I don't know, just crying the whole way over. I saw Corin, it's so cold. Of course, you're cold, you're eating popsicles in the middle of the snow.
You wanna come on up?
Uh, sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much for.
Who's that, who's that beautiful young lady?
This is Bridget.
Hi, Bridget.
She is a lot of times my sidekick when I'm in the district. Oh, okay. Um, and so thank you for the invitation. I think it's super, super important for these relationships to exist so that the flow of government is proper and the way working, working at its full potential. So, I hope to come as often as I can, hopefully once a month. Um, uh, so far, we have been in session for one month, although we've only met twice so far. Um, the, we have voted on our rules package to help us govern at the House level so that we can begin to start work. And one of the main things that you guys and the residents will, uh, benefit from, from that rules package that's different from in the past is that any bill, amendment, substitute bill will be posted on an online portal that will be developed by our, um, L S C staff, which is our Legislative Service Commission staff, that is nonpartisan, part of the government. They will develop this online portal. You guys will have access to all of the amendments or bills or substitutions before they get heard in committee. Prior to that, some of you may know, we would get bills as we're walking, or substitutions or amendments as we're walking literally down onto the floor to vote. Um, so there was no time period for the public to know what was going on, no time period for them to comment, to reach out to their representatives, um, or anything like that. That will change for them, for this general assembly. So, please take advantage of that once that is up and running, um, and make sure to contact us if flag us for stuff that's used in. Yes, I will send out the link to you guys as soon as it is up and running. Um, on the, uh, you know, we haven't quite set all the committees yet or our session schedule yet because there's been some back and forth on the Speaker of the House issue and with the Republicans who are the ones who will set the, those, um, that, that schedule. I can report out on my committees that are set for now. Um, I will be, uh, on the Finance Committee, specifically on the Health and Human Services Subcommittee. The Finance Committee overall is then divided into subcommittees as the, the budget is usually two thousand or more pages long. I will also be on the, um, Commerce and, um, Labor Committee, Aging and Families Committee, and, um, the Agricultural Committee. That's now part of my, a big chunk of my district now includes, um, the rural parts of Mahoning and Columbia County. Uh, the, again, we haven't started committee assignments or committee meetings yet because the, uh, other side, the Republican side, I haven't quite set their committees up yet. A couple of things that are going to come up really quickly for you guys, specifically in your jobs and family services, it's going to be the Medicaid and the unenrollment or disenrollment of Medicaid, um, people and SNAP benefits, and that's all going to go through your jobs and family services. And so one thing that we've been talking about trying to get in your hands is, um, funding for a navigator, we're calling a navigator, so an in-house that can help transition people because you're gonna get flooded with phone calls. Um, and you have to go through the entire process of reevaluating everybody on Medicaid, not just those who were added during the pandemic. And that's gonna start in the middle of March. Um, and SNAP benefits are gonna end first, but that disenrollment on Medicaid is gonna come after that. And there are some organizations, um, like the Ohio Poverty Law Organization that is advocating for, for funding to help transition and they have some messaging out there to let people know what they, what their rights are and what they can and can't do and where they can find help. Um, it's going to severely affect this area and it's gonna put a huge burden on you guys. So, uh, know that that is in our, in our, um, you know, House here, we are talking about it already and hope, and are advocates, advocating to help you guys through that period. Um, and we're, and, and these are the rules, these are coming, it's the rules for the federal government coming down. Um, and so we're kind of a pass-through for it, uh, but we're gonna try to help you guys through it. And, uh, my office is up and running. You can email rep fifty-nine at ohiohouse.gov for, for any issues. I meant to bring cards and I didn't, to pass them out. I will, I will get cards, uh, down to your office and just leave a stack for anybody who comes in or needs anything to contact my office for anything. And, uh, we will start our budget process. The budget should, should, is supposed to be done by the thirty-first from the administration. And then, you know, we have, we get it first, the House, and the Senate gets it, and it goes to conference between the two parties, the two sides, and then it goes back to the, you know, back to the, um, back to the governor and, uh, it'll all be done by the end of June and it's a two-year budget. So, there are, I've met with both the Urban Townships Association, um, which incorporates, you know, a lot of part of Mahoning County and, um, I have meetings scheduled with the, um, uh, Engineers Association that I know the county is a part of and the, um, Commissioners Association for the state. So, uh, I will have a good idea of what the priorities are from them, so make sure that they know what your priorities are, but obviously, you know, we're very accessible in this area in terms of elected officials, whatever level you're at, so can always just tell me directly as well. Um, and I'll continue to push out information eh, from grant opportunities, funding opportunities, letters of support for anything that you guys need. Um, I ha- will have a newsletter that'll go out monthly, so you can sign up for that right on the Ohio House website as well as, um, I'm gonna hold up monthly office hours around the district at the libraries. So, those, that information will be out there too, so you can have in-person FaceTime with me, um, as well, once a month. So, that.
Hitting the ground running.
Hitting the ground running, um, I'm lucky to have experience already under my, you know, under my belt at City Council and that's helped me transition really quickly in this space. And I'm also grateful that if any of you did deal with Michelle LaPorthagen's office in the past, Michelle A. LaBurras, who was her legislative aide, is staying on to be my legislative aide, so she's very familiar with this district and this area. Um, and so, you know, that'll at least be a friendly face for those of you who are already dealt with, um, the state representatives offices. Yeah, any questions or anything you guys are particularly interested in that you want me to look into or no?
Lauren.
Yeah.
Very, so happy for you.
Thank you.
You hit the ground running, great job, you had a wonderful campaign. You know what you're doing and we're proud to have you as our state rep.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. One, one thing you said, and, and I know what's coming with the SNAP benefits, but you, I heard you say that there will be a disenrollment of people from Medicaid.
Yes.
So, that means everybody that's getting Medicaid benefits is going to come off the roll, reevaluate it and fight to get back on?
So, everyone's going to get reevaluated. Uh, everyone who was received, because the, you know, to get the money from the federal government, federal government increased our Medicaid by like six percent, their money to us to then give to recipients, but in order to do that, we had to agree to not disenroll anybody during the pandemic period. They've now declared the pandemic period over and so now people will be coming off of it, but they, instead of just evaluating those who maybe went on it during the pandemic period, they want a reevaluation of everybody on it, which means people will end up, I suspect people will end up falling off that had been on it pre-pandemic, um, unfortunately. So, it's again, something that you guys need help with, every county is gonna need help with because there's just not the in-house personnel in any jobs and family services across the state to manage something like that because we're talking about a lot of people and a lot of people who are gonna be confused and upset and it's drastic amount of money that they've been used to for the last few years coming in to their house. Um, so you're gonna, yeah, hopefully we can get everybody on board to fund, to give you guys some funding to hire this navigator, navigator position that they're talking about and that's what they're calling it, a navigator. And there, like I said, there are a lot of groups who are lobbying as well on behalf of that at the state level to, um, to push that forward.
I think they're gonna need a navigator and a crew.
Yeah, yes. I'm saying it singularly, but it does need to be plural. Yeah.
So, the first, the first thing I understand is gonna go with like the food stamp, we don't show.
That would come out first.
See, that's.
I know.
That's snap.
And, and they change what's gonna be eligible for it.
Ever did, I mean, I know you're new, they're all new into the, getting everything, um, trout, but do you think the state is gonna loosen up a few dollars to maybe help beside the navigator and help transition some of these people from maybe getting two hundred and fifty a month down to fifty? Because, you know, when you're used to.
Right.
I mean, they're gonna have to help supply the food banks.
Right, yeah.
Money.
Yeah.
I mean, that's stuff the state could actually do to help.
Yeah.
These people have like food desert type things.
You're absolutely right and there has been conversations about that specifically around the food bank side of things and stocking those and how we can, um, how we can fill the gap there and transition better because it's gonna be very abrupt. It's gonna feel very abrupt and then it's gonna become a desert in the areas where people do traditionally go to get help. So, um, the, the, it's, it's on the radar. The Senate is well up and running and they have been holding their hearings and introducing bills and all that, but my fear is that our side, the House side, because we're so slow to get off the ground here and this is coming so quickly that we're gonna struggle to get anything moving fast enough. I think the administration is gonna have to step up, um, and the Senate side is gonna have to step up until, um, we, we get up and moving and there's, there's fortunately nothing I can do to get us up and moving, um, on that side of things. We are ready, uh, once the other side is ready to go, but there are, like I said, there are people working on this and there are avenues. I, you know, I highly encourage you guys to get information from the Ohio Poverty Law Organization, that is who we have been working with, uh, and they have a plethora of information for different routes. for different routes that people can go and help, and they're trying to, they want to help the Jobs and Family Services agencies and the people, so, and, and we have a local, you know, the community legally is the local chapter here, but I can give you the contact at Ohio Poverty Law too.
Well, excellent, thank you, Lauren. The, I know that Audrey Morale is our director for JFS told us last week that individuals that got added to the SNAP food benefits during the last couple of years for the pandemic were increased, some, some of them from like $26 a month to 200 a month.
Yeah.
And now they've been living with 200 a month for food, and it's going to be reduced back to the $25. So we're going to have a, you know, a drastic impact on probably, I thought she told me, and I may be mistaken with this number, 47,000 people in Mahoney County. You know, out of 235,000 residents, that that number would be impacted, so-
That is a good number for me to know. So if you could get me those exact numbers-
Yeah, I'll talk to Audrey again and make sure that I'm not mistaken on that number, but-
Yeah. Because that'll help the fight for how many navigators we actually need in this area versus some other areas of the state.
And I think you only need to look at the census that we just had to see, you know, on the levels, you know, because too often, you know, my complaint is always that, you know, a lot of our representatives get out into Columbus and put their rose-colored glasses on, and they're not impacting the people positively within our district, you know, and, you know, it, it needs to be representative of who we are. You know, the three commissioners, we vote on a lot of things, and we don't always vote on our personal beliefs. We vote on the number of people that it's, that's mostly impacted within our, within our county, you know, and that's what we feel our responsibility is, to help the most people we can, you know. So one of the, the pet peeves I've had since 2018, when they eliminated, Anthony and Carol can tell you, is the MCO funds. You know, when, when they took the Managed Care Revolution sales tax away from the county, it took about $5 million a year out of the revenue stream from Mahoney County. Our budget this year is about $78 million between the Justice Fund and the General Fund. And so you take $5 million a year out of that budget, and three of it is from the Justice Fund, of which two of it is the revenue stream for the jail, for the Sheriff's Department. So that money has directly been taken out of the revenue stream for the, for the protection and safety of our, our community, for the policing of our county. So, you know, and we look at that, you know, every regime that comes in from, at the federal level, changes the way we do things. If we didn't pick up the federal prison inmates the last, two years ago, 2020, and reinstate those into coming into our jails, we would not have 5.7 million of income coming into the jail to pick up the difference in this revenue stream that the state eliminated with MCO funds. So we don't know what's going to happen in two years, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. So, you know, we look to try and eliminate the fact that they continue to dig us a hole in the county and local government to fill before we can move forward. So, you know, I'm going to beat on you about MCO funds and-
Yes, and I-
And whatever else-
And she's ready.
I'm ready for it.
Whatever else that we can do to help our residents.
She's ready.
I, it is, I would say, one of the top three topics are those local government funds, as they, they call it state, that's the same funds, and it's a priority, I think, on both sides of the aisle, to reinstall where we used to be at, in terms of that, because I'm looking for a statistic, the graph to show you, but, you know, they changed the codified law around 2008 or whatever, when we started to have that recession, and we were up here with those local government funds, it went down, put it at about 1.66% and has not re-risen, even though we are recovering as a state since 2008, you know. In fact, we had record, record year last year. So getting back up to proper levels is definitely a priority of the Democratic side of the House, and I do know that the Speaker of the House on the Republican side has shown appeasement to it. He is, it is also on his radar as something that he's willing to talk about and put on the table.
Oh, that's great.
So, yeah.
Our partisan support.
Yes, and I was, I was trying to look for the actual graph for you, but I did bring a whole bunch of statistics on the budget and stuff for you guys.
The sad thing is, is that there's these and ours issue at all, you know, because you as a city councilwoman, and us as commissioners, I mean, nobody tells us political patronage and parties when their house is flooding, when they need food-
Right, they don't care.
...when they need assistance.
It doesn't matter.
You know, once you get elected, those should all go away, and you just help the residents that you will put in office to-
Yeah, yes, absolutely, and the, the issues are the issues across the state. Every city or township or community really is talking about the same issues. The difference is just in how we decide to fix them, you know, and when there's 99 people in our room, the opinions fly wild and come into consensus on how to fix them, even though the issues are all the same, which means that we should be solving for those issues at the very least, and not worried about outside things. Right, right.
That's the key.
Yep.
Bury it at the door.
You know, one thing that intrigues me with respect to Washington, you know, the President is touting the $1.7 billion spending package that he hasn't placed. I can't believe why SNAP benefits and Medicaid programs weren't reauthorized in that legislation, knowing very well that this was going to be happening state by state, so it's something that you really can't control.
They did, so we did fight for actually a grace period, so a slower, instead of it being like instant, we get 14 months. And so people aren't going to all come off on day one, it's going to be a slower roll in, it's not quite two years, not quite even a year and a half, but that 14-month time period at least will give us a little bit of breathing room and section people, but I mean, there are obviously, will be people on day one coming off, but they did at least agree to give us a little breathing room on that, but, but you're right. And they also changed like the, what you're allowed to use SNAP benefits for too, in this whole thing, which is pretty terrible what they are, you know, nothing is fresh, you're not allowed to buy anything fresh like you used to be able to on it.
That's something-
Which is just, you know, and then that-
That should be changed.
Right, and then that compounds all the other, that compounds health issues, that compounds, you know, just a whole bunch of other things, but-
Thank you. It's just starting with neon work with the breakdowns to keep this place-
Yes, and keeping the open communications with you guys, because you're right, it's easy to go down to Columbus and get sucked into Columbus, because that's where all the work is. That's where everything that, you know, a big bulk of my time has to be. But it's really, really important to not lose communication up here, and I want to make sure that I keep that a priority, otherwise I don't know what, what priorities-
Sure.
-the people up here want down at the state. You know, they sent me down to the state to vote for them, but I need to make sure I know what they want.
That's good to hear, and that's refreshing.
I know when I get off the exit ramp at Polaris, it's well manicured on the state route exit ramp. When I get off 11 in Austintown, I got to look around at three feet of grass that hadn't been cut for four months.
I know.
You know, so-
Because Franklin County doesn't pay into that local government tax. Only county in the state that doesn't.
Interesting.
Wow. Guess as good as mine, but- I loved it on that one.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking your time and coming down and, and giving us an update. We look forward to working with you in the next couple of years.
Yes, continue, I will continue to come whenever I-
Good. We welcome you.
Thank you.
Got a new thing? Give us a call.
All right.
Hey, look at your little girl, what is sitting, sitting over there is as good as can be, I'm telling you.
Well, thank you all. Enjoy the weekend.
You too. Okay, anything else? No, I'm good. Oh, okay. Oh, Don, Don Baker? Hi, Don, how are you? Field Representative for Congressman, Bill Johnson. We appreciate you being here and coming. Would you like to say anything?
Um, not particularly, just want to pop in and say hi. So with the new district, as of the first of the year, Congressman Johnson will represent all of Mahoney County, so just wanted to start, if you're any better in the loop. So I plan to stop in on occasion and, you know, definitely stay in touch with us, and if you need anything from our office or any assistance, feel free to reach out to me.
Beautiful, thank you, Don. We appreciate you being here, and we'll definitely ask the Congressman, you know, if he can stop at a meeting or two along the way if he has other stuff. That'll be answered.
Yeah.
We're not opposed to asking everybody for help.
And money.
Yeah.
Have a good weekend, God willing, we won't get all the snow, they say, more ice.
Mr. Neff, how are you, sir?
Great, great.
What's going on, young man, first? Our Campfield City, our representative from Campfield, our city council?
I apologize for being on council for so many years and never attending down here, so.
No, it's all good, it's all good, you know, it's, we pass, we, we see each other, you know, a lot of times out and about and get to communicate, but it's nice that you can come down and frequent us as well.
He was here the other day too.
Sam Swager. Sam Labam Cunningham from Austintown, you're a good man, Sam. He takes care of the 9/11 Memorial Park in Austintown, as well as, you know, with the, with the American Legion and Post, and has done a ton of work for veterans and for everybody in the community, and, you know, we thank you, Sam, for stopping by. Any update on any veteran issues?
Uh, I don't know if you want me to talk about it.
Well, locally, you know, if there's anything going on that, you know, I know we've got a new bus coming in that we're going to, a mobile, that we have through Veterans Services going to go around and sign people up and stuff.
I think it's here, the bus is here, but it's-
Well, I'll talk to the bus. Yeah. My name's Sam Swager, 4492 Ohio Road. As he said, I took over when Mr. Pat Carly passed away, the founder of the 911 Memorial. And as the commissioners, they're all involved with us up there. Anthony, he's there, one of the speakers, Dave, been, been there as one of the trustees from the beginning when we started to build the place. I just want to talk about an incident. I'm not going to go into depth because I already was yelled at by our trustees in Austintown, but it really doesn't faze me that much.
Sam, if you want to talk to us afterwards on something specific, this is just for, you know, veterans or if you, if you want to tell people where they can sign up for things like that, the public comments over for that stuff.
Oh.
But if you want to talk to us personally afterwards-
Yeah.
-and something we can help you with, we'd be more than happy to.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, we just wanted to see if there was anything going on with FFW or stuff, you know, American Legion Post, any fundraisers coming up for the, for the service or for the veterans?
No, we're trying to have some fundraisers to raise some money so we can do some projects. We'll be doing some projects in Austintown schools for second graders, fifth graders, seventh and eighth graders, and then the high school. We've got four programs going to be started as far as patriotism, the flag, and, and stuff like that.
Right.
And with the-
The banners you put up in the, in the community as well.
And with the Junior ROTC program and pitch.
You were there for, okay.
Well, we're not alone. And then they got the 50th anniversary of the concert choir this Sunday at 3:00 p.m. on line, so that's it, Dan.
All right, we'll stick around.
Okay.
No problem. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Trump, the county?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller, second?
Yes.
I don't know if it's-
We're all here.
I guess he was one of my colleagues.